Can I just plug your lead to speak? My somebody who lives stupid flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I mean, everybody, nice to see a full boardroom. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Approve the minutes of July seventh, twenty twenty five regular meeting and the July tenth, twenty twenty five special section.
So moved second.
All in favor?
I.
Prove the employee claims filed with the county auditor for one thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty four cents.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Favor.
I.
Through the claims filed with county out for two for seven hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and forty eight dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Through the hiring of Clinton Sabres Conservation Park Technician effective July fourteenth at twenty one sixty five per hour.
Looking to see if he's here. Anybody's here. It's such a full crowd. It's hard to see if our conservation people are here. I'll make a second.
All favor.
I.
Uh, prove the tax abatement for the city of Lamont.
That's a court order we received this past week and Gina did up the proper paperwork. It will be approved by resolution, but looks like City of Lamont uh through court system got some property and were ordered to abate the back taxes on it.
It's an abandoned property from what I could.
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the tax abatement for the city of Lamont.
Second.
Second. All favor.
I.
Uh, through the monthly employee health insurance report, uh, it looks like our ending fund balance right now is two million, five thirty five. That's for our self-funding health insurance program. I need a motion to approve, please.
So next.
Second.
All favor.
That's.
Prove the liquor license for the Buchanan County Fair Association. This is obviously.
This would have been a little confusing. So what they had to do is they had to um get rid of their license that they had for the four H building. And so then they had to file the amendment to move it to the Beer Garden for the Buchanan County Fair, which you guys approved here a few weeks ago. And then they turned around and you're they're required to file a temporary liquor license permit, and that's what this is.
I need a motion to approve the uh new liquor license request uh for the Buchanan County Fair Association.
I like the motion.
Second.
All favor.
I.
Next, uh, for discussion placed on file following the newer management plans Jeremy Riley Byron Township, Section eleven, The Hill Fremont Township, Section seven, uh, Jay Donan Finisher Middlefield Township, Section twenty five. They get a motion to place those on file.
I will make them wish to place those on fire.
Second.
All favor.
I.
Next, uh, set the bidding date for the rental of farmland within B P.
I had sent you all an email on that. These leases expire in March and per code, we need to serve them termination notice by September first. I have made contact via phone to each landlord or not landlord, I'm sorry tenant. And one of the terminations is for the two hundred and forty two acres and the others for the fifteen. So what we'll need to do is we will need to advertise to take bids on these. Um, three years ago when we did it, we did it about mid-September. We in the past, we've tried to do it in September only because it's easier for our egg producers to come in and make the bids than they're not in full-blown harvest. So we just need to set a date sometime in September to open the biz for these two properties.
Do you have some date suggestions?
Maybe go a little maybe like September fifteenth, a little more mid-September to ensure that the publications are done and we'll get it out on the website as we normally do.
When the when the folks start harvesting? Usually October or like.
Usually end of September, October.
Yeah, that's what.
Depending on the weather.
Can I get a motion to set the date for September fifteenth?
I would make.
Do you have a time or?
Whatever you guys want.
I would make a motion to set the date for September fifteenth at ten at nine nine ten.
Second.
Favor.
I.
Thank you. Uh, we do review bids for the garden disposal all panel senior center.
Hey, I reached out to three different people and I got two bids. Um, Johnson Plumbing and Heating, they came in at three thousand forty two dollars. Um, it includes their um replacement. And that is a special garbage disposal. It's a commercial one and has like it has a bigger hole, so we have to take into that that into account. Um, the other one is from Independence Plumbing and Heating, and that one came in at four thousand three hundred and ten.
Did you see any substantial differences between the two? I mean.
One is replacing the Hobart with the Hobart. The other one is replacing um they're they're doing a.
In sick area.
Thank you.
Look at your both quality products. See a pro.
It's like Johnson's the cheaper ones.
Less expensive.
Less expensive.
There's no such thing.
I make a motion to go with Johnson Plumbing and Heating then for three thousand forty two dollars.
Second.
All favor.
I.
And I will call Johnson and let them know.
Thank you very much. Uh, next EMS bond levy discussion and Daniel's here somewhere in the back. Come on up, sir.
Let's get on the record. I made the shirts.
Okay. There you go, boss. I will preface this to say that Daniel and EMS uh, this is Daniel Walter, who's the chairman of our EMS Advisory Council and also the chairman of the Mechanic County EMS Association, along with many of the other apps that he wears within the county, but uh he's been a great asset to this process. And they have developed their proposal um for the county to put the EMS levy on our ballot. And Dan, with that, I'm gonna let you take off here.
Sure. So let's just kind of run through our proposal for here quick. Um, if you want more detail on something, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, if I am too detailed, tell me to shut up and keep moving. Um, in summary, I mean, you guys can read the the overall basics of it. You guys understand that we brought this up because we see there's a need for more funding for EMS in the county. We're hurting for volunteers. Nothing is getting cheaper. Uh, so uh, this is one of our options that the state of Iowa provided to us to the counties in twenty twenty one when they changed the Iowa code. Uh, the second page on the proposal there is the Iowa code four twenty two D that they changed. Basically, uh, there's laws that say you can tax for um law enforcement, laws that say you can tax for fire uh, because they're essential services. In Iowa code up until twenty twenty one, you could not do that for EMS because EMS was not considered an essential service. So they changed four twenty two D to allow for counties to tax to that. They said you can do up to seventy five cents per thousand of assessed value and one percent income uh surtax. Uh, they excluded or since they excluded, they have different rules for the top eleven most populous counties. Obviously Buchanan is not one of those, so we don't have to abide by those special rules. Uh, but that's just a little overview of what they changed um that allows us to do this. Then page three is our recommendations. So we went around uh with the advisory council, which is made up of every agency based in Buchanan County for EMS. So that would be three uh ambulance services and nine first responder services. We also have um the mayor of Jessup, the mayor of Winthrop and a independent city manager uh on our advisory council that you guys appointed. Uh, I think it's been fantastic having them on board, um giving a more of a business perspective than an EMS perspective to this. So after reaching out to or talking to everybody, reaching out to different communities, reach reaching out to different counties that have passed this. Um, these are our recommendations to do a tax levy of up to seventy five cents per thousand of taxable valuations. So that'd be your the property tax. And I specify up to that wording uh allows us in the future to change that down if needed. If you just set it at straight seventy five cents like we had looked at last year, you don't have that flexibility. So adding that in, I think will help in the future. Um, no income surtax. When you look at the complexity of that and what it gets us, it only would gain the county about a hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars in revenue. Um, we saw no benefit there. The tax levy uh sunset of fifteen years, so every fifteen years we'd have to re-vote on this other county. And we suggest that all the funding that comes in gets split uh into three, I'll say, just broad groups. The first one goes to the Just of Ambulance District. The funding that goes to them is what's generated from their district. So the assessed value of the Just of Ambulance District goes back to Jessup. The assessed value of the Fairbank Ambulance District goes back to Fairbank. And then the entire rest of the county is that third group. That third group that encompasses the rest of the county would also include all of our first responder services. So Hazelton, Winthrop, um Stanley, Aurora, Lamont, Brandon, Raleigh, Kloski, Independence. All the first responder services would also be in that that group. To ensure that uh the funding goes where it should be going, we suggest that a twenty eight E agreement be put in place that spells that out. That says money cannot come out unless it is distributed in this way um to help make sure that money goes where it should be going. Um, all the funds that come in by state law go into an EMS uh tax or excuse me, an EMS trust fund. Uh, so they can't be used for anything other than EMS. So we can't buy, you know, pick on secondary roads, can't buy secondary roads, workshops with it, no dump chugs, no fire, those is nothing like that. Strictly EMS. With that, you can use it for EMS buildings, vehicles, supplies, salaries. Um, they spell all of that out in the Iowa code and they actually got clarification on the salaries part of it within the last year or so. They um specifically added in the salaries portion for that. Um, and then again, also with the Iowa law, uh, the advisory council would make an annual report to the supervisors to say, hey, here's where the money went. Here's how every item that was bought. Here's um what we propose next year's budget should be. All of that's public record goes to you guys um for your approval and every year reassess the needs. So that's where that uh up to seventy five cents would come in if in ten years we say, hey, you know, we're we we have a lot of what we think we need, we can, we feel that instead of seventy five cents, we would like to see seventy cents. So we recommend seventy cents. That up to seventy five allows us that that leniency.
Daniel, uh, one thing, just to clarify, the funds that are within the trust fund are uh, your recommendations come from the advisory board on where those funds are to be uh spent.
Correct.
On which uh EM or first responder services get certain amounts and it's based on their recommendations that is presented to the board supervisors.
Yes, so the the last bullet point on the page there uh kind of spells that out that we we feel it would be best that any funding request for this money would go through the advisory council to make a recommendation to you guys. So that way, um, we can say, yes, we think this is a good use of this funding. It's going to help EMS or hey, no, we you know, there's a big problem here. We need to put funding towards this. Uh, ultimately, the supervisors have the final say. We just make the recommendations. Um, but that's our that's our recommendation is to have it done that way to ensure that there's at least and uh some sort of EMS. Uh, I don't want to say filter, but something is some EMS eye is working on it. Yes.
Yep.
So then page four just kind of breaks down the taxable valuations of the county. So at seventy five cents uh in total Buchanan County after the total taxable valuations at seventy five cents, the county would bring in just over a million dollars. You take out Fairbanks portion, which is about sixty seven thousand. You take out Jessup's portion, which is about a hundred and seventy two thousand. And uh Buchanan County's portion or the the rest of the county would be left with seven hundred and sixty two thousand. Uh, we recommend to this first year, take out fifty thousand, set that aside right off the top for the first responder services. That would be used to pay for certifications, for trainings, for equipment like AEDs, Lucas devices, jump bags, that sort of stuff. Um, and then with the rest of that, that the remaining seven hundred and twelve thousand from the Buchanan County portion, um, our recommendation is a county-owned ambulance service to take over the current district that AMR covers. Um, the reason for that or some of the reasons for that uh, right now it's it's a private service, so we would having a county-owned service, you'd be able to have oversight over the financials, oversight over the staffing levels, oversight over the insurance as far as like which insurance companies are contracted with and how that money's reimbursed or how much of that is reimbursed. Um, all of that are complaints that we see currently. And so our recommendation is the county-owned service, which would remedy those complaints.
Can you expand a little bit on that about Blue Cross Blue Shield issue that we currently have?
So one of the problems is uh as a private company, any private company, not just AMR, but any private company, they go to this insurance companies and they negotiate the reimbursements. Well, right now there's some issues between uh AMR and Blue Cross. And so they they don't get along necessarily, so they're not reimbursing uh AMR. Whereas if they you had a county-owned service, we get to do those negotiations or I should say you guys get to do those negotiations. And you can negotiate that with Blue Cross to make sure that people who use the service, their insurance is is covering it and they're not having to pay out of pocket.
So where you we would use that out of um the billing service that Jessup uses, correct?
You can use.
And they already have, well, we could use them.
Correct.
They already have all these contracts in place.
They you you have to start from scratch with each service at to do all of that, but they will do that for you. So that is um how it's budgeted is kind of based off of numbers that PCC uses.
Right.
Um, as far as like what this service would get for income and what their fees are typically a third-party billing service like that is ten percent. So for these numbers, they estimated, um, we would make about eight hundred and twenty five thousand a year in insurance reimbursements. So eighty two thousand five hundred would go back to PCC for their fees to do all of the backend billing services.
But they do all the billing and they they follow up. They do all of that.
Correct.
And just to explain these negotiations, they agree on a set fee schedule for certain types of calls.
Correct.
And what we found is they are negotiated and it's lower than what the normal fee would be. And AMR refuses to negotiate further down for what their fees are. They want their full reimbursement. And Blue Cross Blue Shield would not agree to that. Most of most all of your other ambulance services negotiates with them on a set uh negotiated fee schedule. And then your insurance pay based on that fee schedule.
Correct. Typically, you have levels of a BLS, which is your basic life support. Then you have levels of your ALS advanced life support services. So if you do X amount of of advanced life support interventions, it's categorized categorized as an ALS one, we'll say. And there's a set price for that. And then you do, you get paid or reimbursed for loaded miles. So if I transport the patient from their home to the hospital and it's twenty miles, you get paid a certain percentage per mile of the time that patients in the ambulance is how they're yeah, that's how the reimbursements work.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll keep truckin' here. So with this county-owned service, the next uh, well, the the rest of this proposal is basically out looking um, the first two years of the budget for the ambulance. The first year is obviously the worst one because you have all of your capital expenses, your startup costs, like just getting ambulances, getting cots, getting monitors, getting um radios, uh all that sort of stuff. So you can see we outline our recommendations to get two used ambulances and one new one. That new one, um, you're not going to see it for a year and a half, two years roughly is is how far they're out right now. So uh, you purchase the two used ones to get you on your beat and going. You purchase that third one, that third one sets you up on a on a rotation. So every every uh, I believe we had five years. I want to miss speak here. Yep, every five years, um, an ambulance gets sold, a new ambulance gets bought. That way you're not having an ambulance that's breaking down nickel and diamond, yeah, that sort of stuff. Um, how detailed do you want me to get through this budget?
I don't.
Okay. All right. Long story short, there's a lot of startup costs. Um, and because we're getting to or we're we're recommending two used ambulances to start with, our maintenance costs are higher because we're assuming they're older rigs, you're going to have higher maintenance costs. As you start that replacement program, we would anticipate those maintenance costs starting to go down a little bit as you get into a cycle where you're not again getting old rigs.
That that first year, you're you're five hundred thousand. That's for the two used ambulances, not necessarily the new ones.
That is all free.
That's one new and two used.
Correct. Yep. Uh, new new ambulance was quoted by Lifeline at right about just shy of three hundred thousand just for the ambulance itself.
That's all.
Yeah.
Yep.
And it takes how long to get?
A year and a half, two years from the time you order it.
I guess one positive that we discussed at the advisory board meeting was uh McGrath and Cedar Rapids is taking is adding to their services as doing ambulance outfitting. And there may be a chance down the road behind, yeah, long units and that type of thing through McGrath. Um, to help lessen the burden, what the new ambulance cost would be, but uh, that's something that's yet to be determined, but it's a good. Uh, right now Carl is the only one in the state of Iowa, I think, who does it, doesn't it?
Um, I don't I don't want to say yes, I'm not sure.
Carl Chevrolet out of Des Moines is the primary supplier I know of that uh when you're simply you, they you can imagine the demand that that's out there and why it's such a slow leak time.
Uh, okay, go ahead. Just real quick through our operating costs, we kind of estimated, okay, year to year, what's this? What's this going to look like? How many staff would do we think we need? Um, a lot of these numbers come from our estimates locally, but also talking with other counties. Um, so like the fuel cost, twenty six thousand dollars a year in fuel, that's going based off of the number of calls that AMR runs on, the number of transfers they run on and how the distance they're traveling for each of those transfers. I mean, just math at that point, um, and estimating what's what fuel's going to cost. Um, the staffing, we what our recommendation is to do six paramedics, three EMTs for a total of of nine full-time line staff and a a director. With the the nine staff, you have three full-time on the first crew medics, three full-time on the first crew EMTs, then you'd have three second crew medics and on-call staff. Uh, I don't factor in the on-call staff in the full-time. They have their own line item in here because they're not got full-time employees. There's they're part-time on-call to fill in the gap for that second person for that second rig. Um, that way, twenty-four seven, there's a paramedic and an EMT on the first crew and there's a paramedic and either an EMT or a driver on the second crew, twenty-four seven, seven days a week, three sixty-five um, to help cover transfers, nine-one-one calls, all that sort of stuff. And then like I said, a director to obviously run the service. Um, on the bottom, you see the revenue or the income. So tax revenue that first year, um, you'd have the seven hundred and twelve thousand from the levy. Insurance reimbursements for this first year, we estimated that seventy five percent of the total year because you're not going to start seeing the reimbursements for several months after you actively provide the service. So seven hundred and twelve thousand plus roughly six hundred and eighteen thousand in insurance reimbursements. Um, and then any grants and donations that you would get off of this would just be helping to reduce those startup costs. The more donations, the more grants we can get, the better. Um, I know there are there are a lot of grant opportunities um for cardiac monitors, for ambulances, for radios. I mean, I I would recommend we the everyone with the associate or with the advisor council would be happy to look into grants and apply for grants because again, the the more grants we get, the less startup costs we have. And then the second year, um, the last page is just our year-to-year expenses factoring in. We've already got our startup costs done. Now we're just factoring in our replacement plan. So you need to set aside X amount of money every year. So for example, ambulances, we recommend setting aside sixty thousand dollars a year so that every five years we can get a new ambulance. Um, uh, cardiac monitor, set aside eight thousand dollars a year, replace it every ten years. Um, that way, again, we're not running on old equipment that's breaking down and it helps your resale value, like for example, monitors. You can um resell them back to the manufacturer or to a outright to a private company or whoever, and they can get them refurbished and use them that way. So if you sell them when they are not twenty-five years old, you're going to get more resale value for them.
It's always good to put money aside too for you know, you do that with your own budget, put money aside.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Uh, and then the the rest of the operating costs are essentially the same. And then again, the uh bottom portion is the income and the only change there is then you factor in that full year of insurance reimbursements coming back at the eight hundred and twenty-five thousand that uh PCC estimated. I have a whole packet of info. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Dan, this is this is the information everybody's been asking for. So well done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I I would say it would took, we I don't know how many meetings we've had, eight, nine, maybe over the last seven-ish months. Um, we've had a lot of of good input from all across the county, from Brandon to Lamont to the mayors to the map with the city. It's been fantastic.
I think the hospital's been very forthcoming with their suggestions and assistance also. And they have agreed to continue providing uh, a a location for the ambulances and now with the medic team, that type of thing, which is terrific. Get a great partnership.
Yes, yeah, they've been more than happy to the house rigs and people and uh they have a great uh like education um center down there that they're always offering to a lot of us to use, you know, to their CPR mannequins and stuff like that. So.
Uh, with that, um, I guess entertain any questions from the audience. If you have a question, please uh stand and uh introduce yourself and where you're from and ask your question.
Or anything.
Yes. I'm not going in.
Yep, Anne, two fourteen, Stuckin Avenue Northeast. This is pretty much the same that you had on the ballot the last time. Not too many changes.
Um, the the biggest changes would be the adding in wording in. I I we phrase it as up to, but it's going to be up to the county attorney on how to word it on the ballot, but putting in wording that says up to seventy five cents to allow it to fluctuate to go down in the future if if capable. Um, last year we had talks about doing a county-owned service, but this year it if with support from the supervisors, we are recommending that is absolutely what we should be doing. Um, so it's a lot more solidified in that portion of it. And then last year towards the it it came in very late in the game for the twenty-eight E agreement to have that in place for the funding split up. Um, that got brought in right away the first time this uh this go-around. So the twenty-eight E um uh was a lot more solidified this time. Again, the county attorney will have to do the wording on that. Uh, try and then other than that, the levy itself seventy five cents, we can show the need for the seventy five cents. We can show that the income surtax isn't a benefit and the fifteen-year sunset is all the same. Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks. You guys have done a great job with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience out here? Very good. I would uh like to get a motion for the county to proceed with the EMS bond levy for November.
But how do we restate that? Yeah, that we're just trying to get the word out at this point or?
No, we're get making a motion to add it to the November ballot as a uh ballot issue for final clean.
It would be up going as a public measure and then.
It would be up going as a public measure and then also on the motion that you could put in there to have the attorney review the ballot language. And then I would, if you choose, I would also include accepting the proposal that was presented by the advisory.
Those three aspects.
Yeah.
Sorry. Home favor?
Cut.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Daniel. And, uh, members of the advisory councils are here. Thank you for your inputs and hard work over the, uh, last several months.
If there's any, if any questions do come up, we're all here. So, um, my number's on here. Give me a call, give me, shoot me an email.
Thanks, Daniel. Very good. Uh, next discussion on the workforce development merger.
Is she in the call?
Who's she? I'm not sure.
Erica Litman.
Yeah, hi Keith, I'm here.
Yeah, Erica, would you mind talking about, uh, what's going on with, uh, Iowa workforce development?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, first off, thank you all for having me. My name is Erica Litman. I am the associate director for the Northeast Iowa Workforce Development Board. Um, so right now, um, like a lot of other local workforce areas across the state, uh, we are potentially looking at a merger. Um, just kind of some background here. So South Central, or I guess I could start, so Northeast Iowa is one of six local areas or six areas within the state. Uh, we have Northeast Iowa, which is ours. We have twenty counties in our local area. Um, and then there's East Central, South Central, Central Iowa and Mississippi Valley. And all of those local areas have local oversight, um, across, um, our state. And then on the west side of the state, there's Iowa Plains and that side is run by the state. Um, so right now, South Central Iowa has seen significant reduction in their funding, um, especially to their administrative budget. Um, so these cuts have made it necessary to look at potential mergers, um, with neighboring workforce areas so that way they can maintain access across, um, you know, training areas and employment services. So if we, um, decide to merge, we can retain local control and then shape what future structure looks like as well, rather than having those challenge or changes potentially decided at the state level. Um, so with that, um, kind of why we're looking at a merger right now is we're seeing budget, budget cuts at the state and federal level. Which is reducing ability to operate effectively, um, especially for smaller regions or smaller areas like South Central. Um, the CEOs from South Central Iowa are considering alignment with surrounding areas. So I know they have had discussions with other local areas. Um, Mississippi Valley being one and Northeast being another, since we are bordering, uh, local areas. And then with this merger, it could streamline operations, reduce costs and preserve services for job seekers, workers and employers. And then, um, kind of the main factor there is we can retain local input, um, with decision-making kept local as well. So um, that's just in a nutshell, kind of what, uh, we're looking at right now. Are there any questions?
I have a question. So will our workforce centers go away then? Or how are you going to streamline those operations?
Nope. So they would all stay the same. So right now in Northeast Iowa, we have four centers. Uh, we have Waterloo, Dubuque, Decora and Mason City. Um, and so let's say if we were to merge with like another local area, we would keep those centers. Um, it would just kind of maintain that local, you know, the, the CEOs, which are the county elected officials and those local boards. They would work to make some of those decisions together, um, instead of if it potentially were to, you know, lead further on down the road where like with the state has all of those decisions on the state side, that is completely made by the state workforce development board. So, uh, just to kind of reiterate, all of those, uh, Iowa Works offices, they'll, they'll remain exactly where they are.
Okay. Um, I have another question because I actually got the opportunity to use the Waterloo office when, um, I got laid off from Oakley and went to one of their programs. Um, and I called in to get some information on this and I was told that there would be like a forty-hour wait to get information. Um, and I know at one point in time we had a center here in Buchanan County additionally. So are people actually being, are they being served like they should be served?
In, are you talking about like locally in Buchanan County or just across our local area?
Across our local area.
Yes. So, um, with our centers, so each center kind of takes on, so if there are referrals coming through or if there are mass layoffs or, um, anything like that, our, um, whether, so our Title One staff typically like are dislocated workers. So say there's a mass layoff, they will come directly to, like if there's anything in Buchanan County, they'll come directly to the business and help serve those individuals and help hopefully get them back into the workforce or provide other services that they need. We're also working with, uh, we have a referral system as well and partnering with a lot of, um, like for example, Gator machining and manufacturing right now in Independence. Um, we just, um, kind of helped partner alongside them. They did a summer youth internship grant, or I believe it's ongoing right now. So working with them directly to help serve some of those youth, especially in the surrounding schools too, if they need any services or any help. Um, as well as any adults as well, um, partnering with any community organizations and whatnot. Um, I do know we have individuals from Buchanan County who help serve on some of our local committees as well, which help drive some of the local discussions and potential services. So yes, we are definitely, um, providing services within Buchanan County.
Erica, we recently went through the one-stop operator, uh, process. Can you describe what that is and, and what the results were and all that stuff? Uh, it looks like it was, uh, Mississippi Valley or some kind of?
Oh, so with our one-stop operator, so what the one-stop operator role is, is, um, basically across all centers, there is, we recently had a consortium of our ops managers at each location. Um, however, the board decided to move in a different direction and by potentially, um, having just one person solely, um, provide those services and what they do is they work with all partners across our local area to make sure that services are streamlined. Um, across all offices, across all counties and that all individuals are receiving services and understand kind of how workforce all comes together and how all partners work together. And so Keith, with that, Mississippi Valley, um, we partnered with them. We kind of did their procurement for them to obtain a one-stop operator as they did for us as well. Um, so that'll turn back to our full board, um, for an official vote here at the end of July to get that maybe one person hired by the board, um, for that one-stop operator role.
If you don't mind, could you get into some more details about, you know, who applied and, and what that application process looked like?
Yeah, absolutely. So we had two applications. One was just directly our board applied for that one-stop operator role and then life skills. Um, they are, um, an agency, they're kind of, they're, they're a lot larger. They, um, they have done some of this work before. Um, but they're more, um, broad scale and some of the things that they do with different, um, types of work within the one-stop realm. Um, so they applied both for ours and for Mississippi Valleys and both boards voted, or at least executive committees, um, voted to go with the local board oversight. Um, just a lot of, some of the comments were, um, the budgets, uh, kind of aligned better with what the local boards were looking at. A lot of, um, more clear understanding of workforce development, um, the boards kind of seem to understand that a little bit better. And then also just kind of keeping that, you know, local control and locally, um, with having input um, from the board since they've been in this role, um, for a while and kind of understanding locally what that would look like. So with the one-stop operator, they'll be working alongside all of our partners. So we have four core partners, which is Title One, which our board mainly oversees and the, a lot of the funding comes through that. We have Title Two, which is, um, uh, like working with our community colleges. Um, and Title Three is our Wagner Pizer. That's a lot of the staff you would see if you'd go into those Iowa Works offices. And then, uh, Title Four is Voc Rehab. Um, and all of those partners are essentially located within each of those offices as well. And then we also have required partners too. So I mean, a lot of partnership. Um, and that one-stop operator is going to ensure that all of those services are streamlined across all offices for all individuals and all partners are working together.
So my concern is, uh, you know, it's, it's kind of a bidding process to, to set a proposal to say that you're going to be that one-stop operator. Do you see that changing, that process changing if there's one governance organization for all the different, uh, counties?
Um, and that's a good question, Keith. Um, I, I think it kind of depends on what it would look like. So let's say if, uh, let's say Northeast Iowa and maybe South Central merge or Northeast, South Central and Mississippi Valley all merge together. Um, you know, that's going to be a large local area. So what they could, they could potentially look at, you know, still each having a one-stop person who would cover a set amount of counties. Or they could look at it as, you know, I think depending on which route they want to go, as for now, it would be, you know, Northeast if, if it is voted in on, at the end of the month, we will move forward to look to hire someone for that role. So it could definitely be a discussion and that would be, you know, of course voted by you and the other county elected officials as well as the local board as to what direction you guys would want to move forward with in the future too. So that's definitely something that would be up for discussion, uh, when looking at a merger.
So what's needed from us then today, Erica?
Um, so right now, um, you know, we don't need like a definitive answer. Keith, well, actually, you know, we just wanted to bring this to you guys, um, as, you know, what, what we're potentially looking at. And so, um, Keith would be, um, unless somebody else would be designated, but Keith would be the individual voting on this. Um, when we do come to a vote with our, our, uh, county elected officials, um, and so that I'm not a hundred percent sure the date they're looking to vote, probably by the end of the month, um, if not the very, very beginning of August. Um, and then just to, uh, also reiterate here too, um, we will not move forward with a merger unless every single, um, county is on board. So we have to have all yeses across all twenty counties in order for that to happen.
So by the end of the month, we as a board would have to decide whether or not we would support this, this merger into one organization.
Fine, wish on that, Keith.
I think we probably need to decide what, which direction we want to go.
And Keith, also, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt there.
Please.
Um, there is, we are looking at holding more of an info session as well. It'll be this Thursday. Um, so that's being held in Waverly. However, we're going to have a Zoom option as well. So if anybody else wants to jump on, I can make sure, Keith, that I can send that, uh, Zoom information over your way too, just if anybody wants more background on that.
Yeah, thanks for that.
I think it'd be very, this is John, I think it'd be really informative for us to be, have the availability of the Zoom option. I, I listened in on the last discussion that, uh, they had about the merger and I'd like to listen in on the next one too. Erica, one, one thing. My concern is as the state is consolidating all of these offices and that type of thing. I remember years ago when an individual who had needs seeking help, finding employment. We actually had our own office here in Buchanan County or in Independence. And then it was kind of all consolidated to Waterloo. And I see that is creating a real hardship for people that are individuals looking for assistance. What is, what is the best way for them to obtain assistance through this?
And, and I think you're absolutely correct and that's kind of what we are seeing even as the state has kind of taken over the west side of things. A lot of individuals with just the state oversight, um, in those local areas are not receiving services or not receiving adequate services. Um, and so I would say honestly, to kind of speak to with having probably your closest, uh, Iowa Works Center as that Waterloo Center. If you guys are interested in seeking, you know, more services or you feel, you know, that some of your individuals are not receiving or, or as informed. Um, that's definitely something I will take back to our board and we can look at having consultants coming out to, um, we do it with some of our other smaller communities as to whether they have a, uh, we have a consultant that'll come out to say the library every like Tuesday from what time to what time. Um, and individuals who are looking for services or maybe just want more information can get services that way. We have and will continue to have consultants come into schools to be able to provide information to youth on services they can have. But if there are adults specifically or other businesses that are wanting more information or wanting ways, um, to help kind of streamline that. We do have a referral process too, where anyone can make a referral and consultants will directly reach out to individuals or businesses to help with services too. So I can, I'm more than happy to provide all that information as well.
Thank you. That's one of my concerns. I appreciate it. If we, uh, I, it, it's hard to make a motion when is this going to be a five-region merger, a three-region merger? What are we voting on here?
Uh, so I would recommend that we, we pause and wait and, and sit in on the, uh, information session next week, of course. Um, but as she said, it's either all ninety-nine counties or none, so.
Nope, sorry, Keith, it's for, nope, you're good. Uh, for Northeast Iowa, so our local area has those twenty counties. So all twenty county elected officials would have to vote yes in our local area in order for all of our local area to merge. Yep.
So we'll delay this till later in the month and maybe soon after this call has happened. Any more discussions on that?
No, I probably spoke with Haley, so I'm good.
Well, Erica, thank you for joining us and, uh, giving us some good explanation.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, discuss our twenty-eight year agreement. That was Keith something you wanted to?
Yeah, so, uh, during this, uh, conversation about the county line road and, and, uh, doing the rehabilitation, came up that, uh, we didn't have an eighty agreement with Fayette County and Stanley. So seems like it's, it's time to ask our engineer to, to work with the city of Stanley and the county engineer in Fayette County and memorialize what, what it is we do for each other.
We have formal agreements, I have copies of.
Okay, well, and I didn't find it. Thank you for that.
Do we have county, we have county agreements?
Did you talk with? Brian Gold?
We talked at the county line road, so I got the impression that we didn't have it, so.
Yeah, we have, uh, here's the twenty-eight agreement with Stanley. And actually, if you go to the last page, it gives a summary of the different cities too. When I'm digging this up, I found that, uh, simple to grab. Because it's different with the different cities. They each want to handle it different. And then also here's, here's the twenty-eight agreements with Fayette County. And if we get into major projects, um, you might have to have a separate one on there, but we haven't. We worked together on a bridge for a little bit and then, um, we were having some real challenges on that. You'll see that nineteen sixty-three is where they started with it. How they broke it out in nineteen sixty-three. Everything to the west of Iowa one fifty is maintained by the DOT because that's State Highway two eighty-one.
Thank you. This answers my question.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't, my apologies, but I didn't think you ever asked for the twenty-eight.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I probably should have been more clear.
Very kind of interesting that historically we've had an agreement with Buchanan County or Buchanan County and Fayette County since nineteen eighty-nine.
Actually, it's prior to that even, the original broke down in six, yeah, look at nineteen sixty-three is written on the top of when they started breaking down, who maintains what?
Right.
Yeah, I was looking for an agreement between all three organizations, all three shared boundaries, but you're right. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and I remember getting asked to come up east of one eighty-seven because a farmer up there was saying, we're tired of Fayette County's maintenance, we want Buchanan County's maintenance. Well, you don't switch back and forth. Light operators would revolt. They get extreme amount of pride in maintaining their roads. They don't want anybody else touching it. They sure don't want to have to take on somebody else's.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on it?
No, thank you. That's great.
Okay, uh, that concludes our portion, uh, public comment. If you have a comment, please stand, introduce yourself and where you're from, uh, your address. And we're going to try and limit these to brief. Um, thank you.
One thing I will mention on this is about six, eight years ago, the state attorney general came in and said, yes, in these towns under five hundred, you can transfer them the funds, but you can't transfer them a liability. So that means we do train on the towns under five hundred, the feedback I've So that means we do train on the towns under 500. The feedback I've got from the board is just leave the agreements alone. But if they're doing something that's clearly puts me in a liability, I'm going to step in and address it with the maintenance guy in the town.
Understood.
Would you mind talking about the Sonic surveys that are potentially coming up?
Yeah, I don't know a whole lot about it yet, but we are setting up a meeting. We're going to have Blackhawk County, Fayette County, Platon County and Bremer County all going to meet at the same time. And it's right after, we're going to do this after they meet with the state DOT because they've got to get their agreements for the DOT out of Mason City also. But there is, they're coming with Sonic. Basically what, they have a couple of ways of doing it. But what I envision is going to happen is they're going to have two trucks. They're going to stop, set down a pad. They're going to send out a Sonic, which is basically thump the road. And then the other one's going to pick it up. They're looking for large deposits of hydrogen. And there's been large deposits of hydrogen discovery in Iowa already. And so the joke is it could turn Iowa into the Texas oil fields. And the catch is with the hydrogen, you could burn that for an energy source. As this AI starts and these energy systems come into play, for example, the one that's being constructed in Cedar Rapids right now will consume all the power that the nuclear power, the payload nuclear power plant can produce. And as the amount of energy consumption they're forecasting with the AI generation will exceed what we're currently consuming for electricity across the United States. So that means there's going to be huge electrical demands in the future.
If we just quit AI, we wouldn't need those electrical.
That's right. That's probably not going to happen. Yeah. Did that cover that one?
Yes, thank you.
Another 30 second clip, and we're just learning on this even this morning is Iowa Concrete Paving Association wants to do an open house on our W 35 paving project. And he just sent me a few minutes ago. I was, actually, I was working on the email when he started talking. He's similar to what they've done in Lion County a while back. But we'll let him, we'll let him come in. They'll have opportunity to bring other engineers from around the area. And.
And that's the concrete overlay.
That's the concrete overlay. Concrete over concrete is particularly the interesting part.
Okay. Brian, that's enough. Okay, hopefully, John, that's fine. Please try and limit yourself.
Oh, I, I'll, I'll preface this, but I literally.
Please introduce yourself and give me your address, please.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
My name's Brittany Dees. I live in, at 305 11th Avenue Northwest. Um. I, I think I've, I've timed it over, just 30 seconds over three minutes. But my name is Brittany Dees and I've lived in Independence since December 2018. It has become obvious there is a disconnect. In order to better serve the whole picture, we must first solve a part. It is my understanding for the last 20 plus years, board meetings have always been held on Monday at 9:00 AM. While that may have worked then, I believe it needs to change because professional and societal environments constantly change. What was once effective might become detrimental. For example, it can hinder progress, decrease efficiency, and most importantly diminish trust. In a quick and smaller reach survey, I found at least 60 citizens with a desire for the meeting time to be reconsidered that so they have more opportunities to attend and feel connected. As per section 21,4 subsection B of Iowa code, meetings should be at a time reasonably convenient to the public. For clarification, reasonably convenient is defined as something suitable, easy to access and not overly burdensome, but it's not necessarily the most easiest or optimal option. A step in the right direction for maximum involvement and citizen acknowledgement would be to add this to the agenda for discussion. I know our citizens want a community where we believe in our elected officials. However, true belief is not settling for promises without progress. Discomfort is the price of admission for change. Also, in regards to the information that was provided on Monday, July 7th, there have been many concerns with the IPib complaint. Considering the complaint is non-confidential public information, the citizens do seem to have a lot of the same questions. Why is that, that informal resolution cannot be reached? In chapter 23, the purpose is to provide an alternative means by which to secure the compliance with enforcement and requirements of chapters 21 and 22 through IPib of an effective, informal and cost-effective process for resolution. Moreover, if any party declines informal assistance or if the informal assistance fails to resolve the matter's satisfaction of all the parties, then a formal investigation shall occur under 2310 in Iowa code. April 19th, 2018, our county attorney, Sean Harden, he filed a complaint against the board with violation of chapter 21. IPib and the staff worked together informally to reach a decision on May 30th, 2018. So in short, just over a month was needed for a resolution. Were lawyers needed to be then? Were we encouraged to be as upset or disappointed? Did the incident end up spending a lot of tax money? And if it didn't, then, you know, what was the outcome of that? Most importantly, I truly believe, I truly believe all of our elected officials are competent, bring a burning passion to do the right thing and deserve to be treated equal amongst each other. If our leaders cannot display unity, we cannot begin to be a proper community. We live in a time where we all have to work together. We must frame our perspectives, no matter how tried and true, and view challenges as opportunities for growth and learning. Everyone operates differently and that's perfectly okay. We have to stop perceiving questions as defiance or argumentative. You all called upon the citizens to get involved, but that does not mean we get to be told how or why we get involved. I'm trying to show you. I hear you. I hear your call for action. I'm trying to make a change like an advocate instead of just screaming into the void. By having an open dialogue, mutual respect and setting attainable goals, we can begin to make measurable improvement. And that's the ultimate goal, not winning an argument. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Melissa, I'll be.
You might have to speak up. I don't know.
Just can you repeat your last name for me? Thank you. So I, just so I understand the situation correctly, Keith asked for information through the Freedom of Information Act. And then this was put into place to prevent fraud and miscommunication. So the citizens can ask for that information to the school board, city council, Buchanan County. And then he asked for the information and it was denied. That's my question. And then why was he denied? And if he was denied, why do we need a lawyer? He wasn't denied because we shouldn't need a lawyer if I was a lobbyist. So my concern is those things. And why aren't you vilifying him out of your gauze because I've asked for information. I've gotten from the city board. There's no problem. This information is supposed to be there to prevent things that are shadily going on or not. It's just so people can understand what's going on. So I'd like to understand the anger, what's happened? Why wasn't the information given? Is that what's happening? Can you get to some 30 to the situation? Then the only thing I saw is you guys get very angry saying we're going to have to hire a lawyer and ship off this guy out of the board. That doesn't make sense to me. I've asked for that. The time to matter, AKA, there's a law against not giving that information by a certain timeframe. It's pretty easy. So why didn't he get the information he asked for? And why are you being angry with him that he did? And why do you need a lawyer to comply with the law, which you should have done in the first place? Why are you mad at him? Because he asked for the information and wasn't given it to him? Please explain.
I, I decline any comment, Keith. You.
Yeah.
I created the complaint. I would let you respond.
I'd encourage you to look into IPib. Like you said, there, somebody said it's, it's an open records. So I'm not going to comment about ongoing investigation, but I appreciate the questions.
Thank you. Next.
Lena Schmitz, 1760 to 250 history, Goodwood Enders. I'm the current chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Our job is to review zoning requests and render opinions to the board of supervisors. We use the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan to make. Let me, there has been some issues regarding zoning request. It's not always an enjoyable job. Sometimes get upset over our decisions. However, we cannot allow personal feelings or attachments to color our decisions. You have a family, if you have a friend or family member with a zoning request, recusal may be. I have. We can only make decisions based on these documents, personal wants, ours or the applicant. It is the only way to be fair to everyone. Having said that, there are a few times when decisions are made outside of the regular constraints. In note, the young community, it is a unique situation that requires other considerations. Iowa State zoning workshops are available for those looking to enhance their knowledge regarding this topic. I believe all persons involved in planning and zoning, including county supervisors and members of the Board of Adjustment, should be taking this course on a regular basis. For those in longer term positions, at least twice every five years. This is my sixth year and I have been twice. I'd also like to take the opportunity to say that Buchanan County supervisors and Board of Adjustment are also bound by the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan regarding their decision-making process. Thank you.
Would you mind sending that, that information to me about the, the training?
Amber's office usually sets that up.
Yes, thanks for that.
I do have a request into Cody for when the next workshop is available.
Thanks for that. And then is the zoning board familiar with Senate File 592, Senate File 592?
I do not have that information.
Okay.
Can you explain what 592 is?
Well, I think that's, everybody looks it up.
What was that?
592, Senate File 592.
Next.
Um, I guess after last week, I have.
What's your name and your address? I'm sorry.
Wendy Spears, 2809 Racine Avenue. After last week's board meeting, we have set, it's my understanding that we all you guys have done much better today working together and I applaud you for that. And I also have come to the conclusion that we need to put this in the hands of the IPib board. And we need to go forward in conducting the business in Buchanan County. The best way to spend money for Buchanan County is investing in Buchanan County, not out of county situations, whatever they may be. The projected possible $60,000 that we may be putting out for attorneys to give each hourly wage employee in Buchanan County a 2% raise, which would come back usually threefold in the county of $180,000 that would change hands in Buchanan County. And I think that would be a wiser choice of using Buchanan County funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next.
Q 2342, Ben Buchanan Avenue. Just trying to put this in perspective. We don't know what the cost is going to be, of what's going on with IPib. But putting it in perspective, 50,000, 60,000, how much rock gravel could we put on our roads for $50,000? What would that cover, Brian?
Well, about $10 a ton and I could do the math. $50,000.
500 or 550?
He said, yeah. 4,000 tons, which is significant. It's a significant.
Half a mile, a mile?
Divided by 300 tons of the mile. Actually, still to save it, 500 tons. Eight miles. Yeah, it'd be a heavy ring. So you could say eight to 10.
And we're all, all of us that live on rock roads are being more rough.
Absolutely. Everybody. And here's what's interesting. I'll spend as much on rock and blading the rock is what I get property taxes a year.
We appreciate it.
It's about, the contracts for this year's rock, about 1.5 million. So I heard the comment earlier and I didn't catch, but right now we got.
Let's kind of keep it on here. So here it is. Eight miles of rock. We all want rock. And then the other thing is the cost of the lawyers comes from the general fund, correct? And the general fund is basically our tax dollars that we pay, right?
Correct.
So is there a possibility we're going to have to raise taxes to pay for what's going on with attorneys?
That or you have other service.
And where are you going to start? What are you going to cut first?
Or you use the savings that we have in our, in our funds?
Chances are what it will be is a budget amendment approved by the Board of Supervisors and that will hold our fund balance.
Carryover. Okay, and carryover was reduced last year, right?
Yes. Yep.
So how much do we have in carryover right now?
I would have to, I don't know.
Ballpoint figure. I mean, just.
Probably about 30 million. Of mine, that's a real guess.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and people get concerned, wow, they've got $30 million in carryover. Bear in mind, that money has to sustain us until September when we start receiving tax receipts. So that's operating funds from now until September.
And if you have any projects going on, is the project.
Correct.
And we have no idea what could possibly, what kind of tragedy or.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Bonnie Urban Brandon. I just have a question. Am I correct in once the filing has been made with IPib that there is no going backwards? That it will go forward no matter what? So this money is out the window?
Next. And no further public comment, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.